Buddy, silence your cell phones and your Twitter feeds like towards the wall. Oh, it's right there. Oh, it has a ringer? Oh, you never turned it on? Yeah, mine too. Got the threat of rain on Saturday, it never made it, did it?
Nope, never did.
I went to the zoo. John, been in the Caldwell Zoo lately? It is amazing.
We're having a new deal, the new section. I'm gonna have to check it out.
I'll now call order this meeting of the City of White House Council for today, April the twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-five. It is six P M. Ms. Nichols, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. James Wonsley?
Here.
Zach Briscoe?
Here.
Bronsel Byrne?
Here.
John Chambers?
Here.
Michael Lo?
Here.
Matt Lazarine? All right, we have a call.
Thank you. Will you please stand if you're able and join Councilman Briscoe as he leads us in a word of prayer?
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for your many blessings and please guide us tonight as we conduct our city's business. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join the council in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and invisible.
The lyrics have been removed from the wall. Everybody still knew it.
Me and John always looked at.
All right, this is some fourth-wall stuff. Sorry to break it. All right, so that takes us down to item D, Presentations. Mrs. Black?
We do not have any presentations tonight, Mayor.
All right, we presently have no presentations.
Okay.
That takes us down to item E. Certainly, we have some community interests. Mrs. Black?
We do. Mayor and Council, the renovations at one oh nine East Main continue, and as far as I know, we are still on track for a tentative August opening date, so we're excited about that. Hopefully, you'll start seeing some more progress on the exterior soon, but be confident that things on the inside are happening as well. We, I believe that elevator was supposed to be on site last week and installed hopefully this week, so things are progressing nicely over there. This Thursday night, from five to seven here in this room, we will hold an open house for Shagian Park. We have seen two preliminary concept plans from our partners at Half, and we're excited to show those to the community and get their feedback on those two concept plans. We will also be opening a survey on Friday for those that can't make it on Thursday to gather more input and feedback on those two plans. And as a reminder, we are hoping to start construction on that park in January of two thousand and twenty-six, so that will be here quickly. And the Chamber of Commerce is holding the reverse raffle this coming Saturday. If you don't already have tickets.
There are three left.
Three left still, maybe, as of this morning. So if you don't have tickets yet, you might want to go and grab some. And then Ms. Nichols and Morgan have been working on Christmas on Main. And Mayor Council, I think we have an opportunity to add the ice skating on Friday night and still remain largely within our budget for the event. So we're excited to turn that into a one-and-a-half-day event as opposed to just a one-day event, so we're really excited about that. They've been working really hard on that already, and so we think it'll be a great day for the community, and that will be the first Saturday in December.
Excellent. All right, anything from council on a matter of community interest? All right, there are still three tickets left. All right, that takes us down to item F, the Consent Agenda. We have three items for consideration on the consent agenda. They are: one, discussion, consideration, and action on contracting with Leinberger, Goggan, Blair, and Sampson L L P for collection of delinquent municipal court fees; number two is a quarterly investment report; and number three is approval of the minutes of the city council meeting on March the twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-five. If council doesn't want to take anything on the consent agenda, move it on to the regular agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Motion to approve as presented.
I see.
All right, I have a motion and a second. You get those, Ms. Nichols? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, the consent agenda passes. All right, that takes us down to item G. Other action items, ordinances, resolutions, and public hearings. Number one is a public hearing, discussion, consideration, and action on various requests to the combined zoning ordinance, setbacks to allow for the reduction in the rear setback from twenty feet to fifteen feet for property located at two ten Nun Street, White House, Texas, property of Robert Schultz. Do we want to have discussion before we go into the public hearing or go straight into public hearing?
Mayor, my understanding is that the applicant, Mr. Schultz, is on his way but has not yet arrived. If we want to maybe move that to item?
Make a motion to table it for later this meeting.
I don't think we need a motion.
Stable it would be like the next meeting. So yeah, we could just move it. If there's no objection, we'll move it further down the agenda. That's good. All right, so we'll come back to that. Item number two is discussion, consideration, and action on public works projects, including public works shop repairs, wastewater treatment pump, replacement modifications, drainage infrastructure repairs, Austin Bank Tower rehabilitation, and water wastewater master plant. Mrs. Black?
Mayor and Council, as we do when we have any new department director take over, we have taken a hard look at some of our public works needs with the appointment of T J Henderson as our Public Works Director. Several things have risen to a level that we need to address sooner rather than later, and we have not budgeted for them. So I wanted to walk you through a couple of those things today to make sure that we are protecting the resiliency of our infrastructure as we go forward. Again, most of these, none of these have been budgeted, but I think doing it now ensures our long-term sustainability for our operations and services. Before we start talking about the individual projects, I wanted to give you an overview of a couple of the funding sources that we have for these projects. So in two thousand and eighteen, the city issued street and stormwater certificates of occupancy. The remaining balance in that project is about nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and gives us an opportunity to complete some of these projects. We have about two million dollars remaining in the two thousand and twenty-two certificates of occupancy that were issued primarily for one oh nine East Main or City Center. And then we have some utility fund balance that we'll talk about as we move through these projects. First on my list is the public workshop repairs. Our roof in the public workshop has been leaking and has caused some mold issues. And the bathroom in that facility, I believe, was originally installed by our public works employees and needs some correction so that it functions properly. It's just a single-use restroom. And the roof repair is coming, we did receive three quotes on that. It is forty-two thousand dollars. We have, I have, go ahead, I went ahead and gave the okay to progress with that under, as an emergency repair because of the damage that it was causing to the rest of the facility. And then the bathroom renovation came in at ten thousand nine hundred dollars, and the funding source that we're recommending for this is the two thousand and twenty-two certificates of occupancy. That was largely a facility certificate of occupancy issuance, and we felt like the need and purpose closely aligned with the issuance of that C O.
Occupancy?
I mean, certificate of obligation. My apologies. Any questions on that one? I don't know the age of the public works facility. I believe the roof has been replaced once before, but it, no, has not been replaced. Sections, maybe? Okay. And the next project are, is a pump replacement and modifications at the wastewater treatment plant. So we have two main pumps at the wastewater treatment plant at Works. Those two pumps are responsible for bringing in all of our sewage that comes into that plant and moving it and pushing it through our plant. One pump has been out of operation for approximately eighteen months, and when that pump went down, there are also electrical modifications that are needed to the other pump. And that both of those pumps have been inoperable for the eighteen months that we're discussing here. So we've been operating off backup pumps for the last eighteen months. So to get that working properly in the way that it was designed to, a pump replacement is about thirty thousand six hundred dollars, and the electrical work needed on the remaining pump is eighteen thousand two hundred and eighty dollars.
So we got two that are down?
We have two that are down. One is completely inoperable and needs to be replaced. One needs some electrical modifications to currently, to process current flows coming into the plant.
Excellent.
I don't have a funding source on here. Staff is recommending that we take that out of utility fund balance. Total cost at four hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. So far, our utility fund is operating, is currently coming in a little bit ahead of where we were last year financially, and we feel like the fund balance will be able to cover this type of project. The next two projects are drainage infrastructure repairs, so we have two different projects that need to be addressed. One is on Topaz and one is on Lexington. Both of these are a result of homeowners contacting us, and these are for public infrastructure projects. So these are in-existing stormwater easements, but happen to run along property lines. But again, we do have easements for both of these. We have received engineering costs on both of those. We have not received construction costs just yet. We are working with our engineers on that. And staff is recommending using the two thousand and eighteen certificates of obligation, of which, without these projects, we have a remaining balance of nine hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars. Again, those C Os were issued for both streets and stormwater, these both being stormwater projects. They fit with the means and intent of that initial issuance. We would like to move forward with both of those as emergency repairs. They are both causing damage to property owners, particularly the one on Topaz. We are in danger of losing a fence between the two properties as the stormwater pipe running between them is failing, and they're getting significant seep holes and areas of concern. Same on Lexington. The Austin Bank Tower rehabilitation, we have had a preliminary inspection on that tank. We are waiting on the final report and opinion of probable cost for that rehab. It will be approximately four hundred thousand dollars to complete the rehab. This is both an interior and exterior refinishing of that tank. It's about, it's a hundred thousand gallon elevated storage tank. And the funding source that's recommended is the two thousand and twenty-two certificates of obligation for that. This was something that came up as a result of a T C E Q inspection. They have given us until December of two thousand and twenty-six to rehab both this tower and the Hagan Road Tower. This one, however, is the priority due to the deteriorating condition of both the interior and exterior of that tank. We are not in any violation. It's meeting all the quality standards now, but as that finish continues to deteriorate over time, it is something that we need to address. We do have a twelve thousand dollar request in here for some critical safety equipment. As you can imagine, both our water and wastewater employees are exposed to chemicals that can be potentially hazardous if they're not handled in the correct way, including chlorine and sulfur. So we would like to replace one chlorine leak detector, add a detector to a facility, and replacing sensors at multiple locations. We'd also like to replace the chain hoists at five locations. You'll see our lift stations. We have chain hoists to move chemicals and pumps and some of that critical equipment around, and we can take that out of our next fiscal year budget, I think is what I have in here. We, we'll look at whether it's this fiscal year or next. I think we'll have some opportunity to take it out of the current fiscal year budget.
That, so that item is pretty small.
It is. I think we can take it out of current year.
Yeah, yeah.
And finally, a water wastewater master plan. We've been talking with one of our new city engineers to develop a water and wastewater master plan. As we continue to grow in our community, it's something that we need to make sure that we are adequately planning for the water and wastewater needs of our community and assessing the current condition of all these projects so that we don't come back to you and have to come back with the same amount of projects, or at least that we can plan for them more appropriately. So this will help us do that. We have an estimated cost in here of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm waiting. We are reviewing the scope of work from the engineers now and have not received a final cost. We're still refining that, but I wanted you all to be aware. That will be your recommendation in the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six fiscal year operating budget, which will come before you later this summer. I do think we may have some opportunity in additional fund balance as we continue through the two thousand and four, two thousand and five fiscal year to help cover the cost of this as we go forward. And this is a look at other critical projects that we anticipate for the upcoming fiscal year, the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six fiscal year. As I mentioned, the Hagan Road Water Tower. And we continue to face some limitations with the State Farm wastewater lift station, both it being undersized and just aging. There are some critical things that we need to do. As we've added load on that lift station from both Water Burger and some of the new development along one ten. We have a need to upsize that lift station and then probably construct a new one due to its age. Also, we have some concerns about the drive and drainage into the wastewater treatment plant. Right now, in a good hard rain, our staff is either stuck at the plant or outside of the plant because of the amount of water that flows through that area, so that is something that we will be looking at in the next fiscal year as well.
That's the area that goes along beside the creek down there?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, for sure.
So Mayor Council, I just wanted to give you an update on that. As you can see, we have some pretty, some high-dollar things and some not as high-dollar things, but wanted to let you know that we are assessing these public works projects. Get your approval on those so that we can move forward on those that we're recommending for approval, and then just, we will keep you posted on some of those other things as we get more information.
Does the Austin Bank Tower rehab include painting, or is that a separate item?
It does include painting, is my understanding. Again, we haven't received the full final cost on that and the full report. We've just been told it will be around four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. I think the school is looking to be a partner in what winds up.
We'd love for that to happen, and maybe some upgraded lighting on those logos.
Yeah, sure.
We have made that clear to your engineers.
Excellent.
Hallelujah.
Yeah, that all looks, that looks like needs, not wants, so. And it's good to see that we have funding sources for those. Any questions or comments from council? You need an action on this, Mrs. Black?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve repairs to the public workshop, wastewater treatment plant pump replacement and modifications, and drainage infrastructure repairs.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Did the, the Austin Main Tower rehab and the rest need to get added to that motion?
Those things, as we finalize those costs, we will bring those back before you. Because of the amount, no, I didn't, I wasn't clear on that. Because of the amounts and contracts that will be required on some of those things, we will bring those back before you as we get them.
Good catch.
That's our question.
All right, any other comments or questions?
The generator has been installed on one ten, is that right? Boy, that is such a great thing. Good job.
All right, any further comments on this agenda item? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say no? With that, that passes. So are, Mr. Schultz, did he come in, Mr. Schultz? So we have your item. We skipped past it for a moment, but now that you're here, we can, we can jump back to that. So this is arranged under a public hearing? Do we want to do the public hearing first, or comments first, or how would we like to go about this?
Mayor Council, why don't we have Miss Hargis come up and do a quick introduction of the item and the background on it, and then we can open the public hearing after that.
Yeah, Miss Hargis, please come on up.
So, a little bit different from me being out here, so thank you, Mayor Council. Tonight, we're being asked to consider a variance for two ten Nun Street owned by Robert Schultz. The applicant seeks a reduction in the required rear setback from twenty feet to fifteen feet to allow construction of a duplex on a lot that's on residential medium density. That zoning does allow, that is a permitted use on that zoning, or in that zoning. The property previously had a dilapidated mobile home situated on the property approximately seven and a half feet from that rear setback. Its removal and proposed redevelopment does support the intent of the zoning ordinance. However, the lot's depth of sixty-nine feet is slightly less than that of most of the surrounding lots. Those generally range from about eighty feet to a hundred and ten feet. As required, the notice, the notice of this request was published in the newspaper, posted on our website, and displayed here at city council chambers and at city hall. Public hearing was held at the Planning and Zoning Meeting on April fifteenth, and since providing that notice and posting a yard sign as required, staff did receive three inquiries during that timeframe. One caller opposed the variance and was advised of how he could submit his comments. Second caller was wanting to know about the mobile home, and once they understood that it could not be replaced and was not being replaced, they had no objections to the variance. A third caller just left a voicemail seeking details, which I did return. That call explained as best I could the request and then how he could participate if he wanted to leave comments. I did not receive the follow-up call from him. During the P N C public hearing, one resident did speak, expressing concerns about the request. He was a slightly less opposed after learning that the reduced setback is not in the front, it's actually in the rear. He mistakenly thought it was in the front. Mr. Schultz unfortunately was unable to attend that meeting. The commission, the P N C commission did reject the request at that time. Mr. Schultz did afterwards file an appeal, and he is present tonight to speak. We do need to have a public hearing to be open to allow anyone in attendance who would like to speak for or against, and staff is seeking action tonight on this.
All right, thank you, Miss Hargis. Any questions regarding the content that Miss Hargis has shared? All right, hearing none.
Are we calling the front the Willingham side or the Nun Street side?
The Nun Street side.
All right, thank you, Miss Hargis. So the time is, sorry, the time is now six twenty, and we'll suspend the regular council meeting and open a public hearing for this item. Public hearing is open. Anyone who would like to speak on this topic, now is your chance. Come on up and let us hear from you. Ms. Schultz, that includes you. Would you like to come on up? Wow, you brought a lot of visual aids.
My name is Robert Schultz. I appreciate your time today. Schultz Custom Homes is my contracting company. The reason for the variance is, and I have some preliminary site plans that I could provide, if you don't like. As Susan said, it's a very shallow lot from front to back. And I would like to include enclosed garage parking and also allow adequate parking off the street.
She's got another one, Councilman.
Oh, thank you.
So in order to do so, basically, I've got thirty, twenty-nine feet roughly of buildable area from front to back, so if, with the five-foot setback, or variance, I'm sorry, in the back, that would allow me to have a enclosed garage in addition to the duplex structure. So each unit would have its own garage.
So instead of covered parking in the back, you're wanting a setback so you can do garage parking?
Just, yes, sir. To move the structure back to allow room for that garage. The plan that I presented is with the fifteen-foot rear setback, it's currently at twenty foot. So I've, pretty much, I've tried to work the plans as much as I can, but I don't see a way to allow for a garage if there is not an additional five-foot building space.
So the carport that's back there, is it?
Oh, that's, that's all been removed.
Has it? Was it twenty feet off the?
It was actually seven feet. I did, or six point eight. I printed out a.
I think it was grandfathered in. Was it?
I'm sure. So yeah, the mobile home's been removed, the carport's been removed, and all that's cleared out, so. Basically.
Yeah, I see this leaves you twenty-six and a half feet in the front away from the right-of-way. It's fifty-five feet away from the street.
Yeah, the lot line actually extends into the street, but I, I put the setback from the edge of the pavement, and then I believe it's twenty-six feet. So that's kind of the issue I've got there.
And it looks like it's sixteen and a half feet on the back.
Yes, sir, it is. I mean, I would like to add another foot to the kitchen just to make it a little bit bigger throughout the floor space.
Oh, so it'd wind up being the fifteen that you're asking for?
I mean, we could make it work with a four-foot variance, but ideally, it'd be nice to have another, an additional foot, so five-foot total in variance on the rear setback. Otherwise, I don't see a way to have a enclosed garage for each unit. So I, I mean, my intention is to keep the neighborhood and, you know, I've removed the.
Street parking, I like that.
Keep it looking good and build a good product and allow adequate off-street parking, so. If we move that back, the cars would be very close to the edge of the roadway, so.
So I read, I read the report that came out of the planning and zoning, and it looks like the concerns were addressed or mitigated of the ones that came in. My estimation is you not being there was a pretty big part of maybe what led to this. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So now you're just in the process, you're here.
Yeah, I apologize. I had a family kind of medical, I wouldn't say emergency, but.
Oh, I understand. I'm just trying to let you know where, where we're at with this. I mean, generally,
Of course.
The things that go through planning and zoning, those, those people kind of swim in that all day, so we kind of lean on them. But I would, I would assume that, I mean, what you're asking for here doesn't seem out of order. Zach, you were on P N Z for a long time.
I don't see an issue with it at all. I mean, he's improving the property overall. And there's going to be more of a setback than there was with the carport there.
Right.
Right.
And for good reason. I mean, taking off, removing street parking to allow for garage parking, I think is a good, a good justification for this type of thing.
It's a very wide lot, but it's, unfortunately, it's very shallow, so.
Yeah, I see that. Okay. Any, any more questions for Mr. Schultz? All right, thank you for the presentation, sir.
Okay. I have some examples of similar structures I've built if you need to reference those as far as the style of the home. But if you're masonry construction, definitely not upgraded from what was there.
Oh, excellent. That's great to hear.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this subject during the public hearing? Go once, go twice. Time is six twenty-seven. Public hearing is closed. We're now convened to regular council meeting. So any more, any questions or comments, discussion among council members on, on this request?
I don't see an issue either.
Yeah, on matters like this, we tend to lean on the organizations that we stand up, you know, for their advice, but I really feel like this one came with a no out of P N Z because the person that was asking for the variance wasn't there, so. I feel like based on what we've heard today, you know, maybe going against what they presented for us. I think they were putting it in our court, is how I'm reading this. We're not allowed to communicate with them on city matters, so it doesn't really, there's not really a channel of communication there, but that's how, if I'm reading the runes, I'm, I'm reading them that way, so. If there's no further discussion or deliberation, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the variance request of Robert Schultz to allow a reduction in rear setback from twenty feet to fifteen feet for property located at two ten Nun Street.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? With that, the motion passes. All right, that takes us down to, oh my goodness, where were we? Oh, we're down to item three now. Discussion, consideration, and action on replacement of the Welcome to White House sign. Discussion, consideration, and action on replacement of the Welcome to White House sign. Lots of excitement and attention in the air. Mr. Martinez, take it away, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I am back tonight with another fun discussion item.
Ooh, I like it, look at that.
That is, that's original. And it's got white lettering.
He did that for you.
You want to say options on it?
So just as a quick reminder, as we go through these three weeks turnaround, it's pretty quick for some of these graphic artists, so. I wouldn't be too committed to colors and fonts, all that stuff. We still have time to change, but certainly signs styles are what we're looking and talking about today, hopefully.
Yeah.
I met with a couple of vendors. And we have three options for you guys to look at tonight. Option one is from Leon Signs. It is listed as high-density foam. It's actually expanded polystyrene, which is a molded thermoplastic.
Oh, wow.
When he described it to me, he said you could press hard on it and feel it give, but it would not imprint, right? Rebound or whatever.
All right.
This one would hang from the existing pole structure. It would not be lighted, it would use the current lighting that's out there. The proposal was fifteen thousand five seventy-five. I asked him for some examples of those types of signs. And he sent me these photos. Oh, they're not in there.
Oh, yeah, I don't think they're in there.
I think they're in the other presentation. Option two. Is more of a traditional sign. It's an aluminum cabinet. With polycarbonate signs. It would be lighted from the interior with LEDs. It's polycarbonate with vinyl graphics and then a clear coat. It's basically like a, you know, sign you see at a business office or something.
It hurts my eyes a little bit.
With that one, the pipe frame would be removed and it would just set on the concrete pad that's up there. This proposal was twenty thousand four.
Twenty-seven. Good grief.
You got me.
While I was going through all of these. I found a guy on social media that made a metal sign for Brandon Corp.
Oh, there he is.
Which is at Second and Broadway in Tyler, if you're familiar with them. He's basically a metal worker that created this sign. So I had him come look at it. He, his, when he was a kid, his dad had a gas station here in White House, so he was super pumped about putting together an option for us. This one would be. Twelve-gauge metal center. Double-sided, both of the, that would be the red and blue that you see. And then both of the sides would be, the both of the signs would be twelve-gauge or fourteen-gauge metal. It would have acrylic kind of sandwiched in between with LEDs so that it would light up. And he said he could do, you know, wood style. Powder coating to kind of pay homage to the old sign. But we could also do, you know, just a solid gray or white or whatever. I asked him if he, if you guys were interested in that, if he could make me a sample of that wood paint. And he said he could, so if that's something y'all are interested in, I can certainly get him to create that, but. You know, this is just an independent metal working guy. His proposal was nine thousand seventy-five. And just as another reminder, you know, all the colors and fonts are easy changes, so if there's something that you guys like and you think that it would look better a certain way, we could certainly work it up. But I'm happy to answer questions or help you guys through your discussion in any way.
So we could choose any design on any of the three, correct?
Pretty much. Yeah.
And which one do you think would be the most weather resistant?
I think all of them are designed to be outdoors. He gave me some, you know, small parameters about, you know, ten-plus years, fifteen-plus years on, you know, how long they would last. You know, I think you're looking at that sort of lifespan, all of them. I mean, you've seen those polycarbonate signs when they get old and what they look like when the decals start coming off.
Yeah, it was wind damage that took the last one, really. So which one of these, which one of these would hold up to that?
You know, the, the option one would still hang and he was kind of letting the, the movement reduce the wind load. The metal guy didn't really have a comment on that. He just thought that it would be better off if we, you know, tethered it at the bottom to prevent any sort of movement.
And that first one can be used as a flotation device.
But I'm assuming the metal one's obviously going to be the happiest of the three.
Yeah, I would assume that too. I didn't talk to him about what sort of weight.
I'd like to see number three, but I'd like to see a sample of the material.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, the price to me, just speaking to myself, is more.
Reasonable.
Lucre, you know, than fifteen thousand dollars.
But the other one was twenty. The one in the middle's twenty, one on top's fifteen.
It's, it's a big, I mean, it's a big sign.
I know, yeah.
I'm partial to the old signs. I mean, is there any way we could do that same design on, on number three?
Yeah, I could.
Just recreate it.
Yeah, recreate the old style.
Do the metal.
I like that idea.
Yeah, I'm happy to talk to him about that.
And there's lighting on number three, what was the lighting?
Right, so it's, like I said, it's metal, two sheets of metal with acrylic inside with LEDs inside of that.
Okay. That's pretty neat.
It is. I like the color scheme of three. You know, I just like it. And I like the white lettering. You can actually read it. You know.
I agree.
Yeah, I really like, I really like you're going with that, Zach. We just have a ruggedized version of that one that's metal. I like, I like that.
He said he could do, you know, if we wanted to really, I mean, I don't know how far you want to go with it, but he was talking about doing the ends jagged so that it looked like, you know, boards.
I mean, the other one's encased, I, I think the other one is encased in metal, so we wouldn't notice the jagged ends on that because it's framed, right?
Yeah, I could have him work up a, a design with the lettering style of the old sign and then if you want to see a sample, I'll have him put together.
There's no guarantee, no warranty or anything probably with the metal guy.
I mean, I could talk to him, I didn't talk to him about that, but I'm happy to visit with him about that for sure, yeah.
Yeah, that was one of the benefits of going with a signed company was that it would cover.
Yeah.
Cover a warranty.
Probably pretty doggone heavy, but maybe not. With the composite materials. I just wonder how much weight that load-bearing frame would hold, I don't know.
Mayor and Council, in your packet are some examples of the same material as number one. I just didn't get it in this slideshow, but there are, there are some pictures of that in your council packet.
In the, which one? Oh, like, you click on the agenda packet link?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know that they are in there. Oh, yeah, they are, okay. Marshall Elderly Childhood Center, cottages of Tyler, yeah.
We don't have a downtown to White House. And this to me really adds a little bit of hint to a downtown feel, you know. I just love the sign down at the, down at the corner, I just like it.
The only one I feel strongly about is number two, as in, I don't like it.
Yeah, me too. Why would you do that to us, Aaron? There we go. That's a pretty big variety of showing what that sign can be used for. The cottages of Tyler, like, what, what is that?
Is there all that high?
Yeah, that, that thermoplastic, those are all cast in that.
Oh, okay.
Plastic stuff.
So nobody, I know when I heard foam, I thought a very different thing than what you're seeing here.
Yeah.
So we asked for some.
And that it's, you can, squishy, yeah.
It's a technical term, I'm sure they love.
It's a sign made out of Nerf balls, you know.
Yeah, Nerf. And again, the metal sign would be illuminated externally with our own.
The metal sign would have lights inside of it.
Oh, LEDs, okay, yeah, okay.
The letters would light up.
Oh, okay.
Just like that, just like that Brandon sign.
Very cool.
Yeah, neat.
I'm sticking with the, you know, I'm for the old design.
Yeah, I like that.
Yep.
I like to see how close.
How it looks like wood.
Yeah, how close you can get to that. If we, if we changed it and nobody noticed, but it still was here after the world ended. I mean, that's basically what that metal sign is going to be. I think that would be a great outcome, because people, they want the sign back. And being able to tell the story, it's back and better than ever.
People very want the sign back.
Yes, I hear about it a lot. All right, any, any more questions?
Thank you, sir.
All right, we, all right, looking forward to seeing that. Where does that take us?
Furnishing fixtures.
Oh, yes. We are going to the item number four, discussion, consideration, and action on approval of furnishing and fixtures for City Center. One oh nine East Main, Mrs. Black.
Mayor and Council, after a very tedious process, we have a proposal before you tonight for eight hundred and seventy-five furniture and fixture items that will go in City Center. That includes fabric options and, you know, all the end pieces and trim pieces and trash cans and lighting and a few of those other things that are part of the furniture and fixtures for one oh nine East Main. We have been working diligently with the architect team, Randall Scott Architects, and their subcontractor Intelligent Interiors for this. Again, it's eight hundred and seventy-five items and a total proposal cost of six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Five hundred, six hundred and thirty-seven, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. This cost is accounted for in the 2022 certificates of obligation for City Center. When we began this process, the architect team indicated that we should anticipate this cost to come in at around seven hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars. So we are under that expectation at six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
And that was the number they gave us two years ago.
Yes.
So it's great that you guys were able to get under that number.
It is, and Intelligent Interiors has worked very hard. As you can imagine, this is a very fluid situation with all the talk about tariffs and how this largely comes from overseas. So we appreciate their hard work in getting this cost down and accurate for you tonight. But that staff is recommending approval.
Yeah, that's a lot of stuff. So it looks like MSRP, they were at one point one million. And who negotiated, who did negotiation on this?
Aaron and I met with them on the proposal most recently. This is also approved contract pricing with both state and federal contracting as well. So it's negotiating this larger process. It's how you're, how we can move forward with this purchase without taking individual bids for every single one of these items. So it's a cooperative purchasing agreement.
Well, good job on that end, saving us four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars on the price tag, so thank you for your work on that.
And of course, this is all commercial grade.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it meets compliance standards, it's meant for wear and tear, it's, it looks comfortable but durable.
We went through several of the different grading options on each of the fabrics and. You should have seen the tables we had set up in here with the number of fabrics and.
Does he come with Scotch guard?
Well, they're, they're rated for those types of things and, and made for those types of uses.
I understand these are in Aaron's shopping cart and he's having to refresh it every once in a while and make sure. Need to make a decision.
Sure, we were all cross-eyed by the time we left these meetings, so.
All right. Council, I mean, it was great to see a preview, anybody with the agenda packet, which is part of the meeting, you can click on it and see and it shows where all these items are mapped, to make sure every room had a trash can and, you know, every desk had the appropriate number of chairs. The co-working space, the way it wound up with how the furniture is kind of multi-use, where there's a private space, but on the back of that is a bar with two seats on it. You can tell there was a lot of thought that was put into maximizing all the furniture that we put in there, so thank you for that.
Very nice, look at it.
We're excited. We did make one change to allow for enough training tables to go into the banquet space as well, so it can be set up as with classroom and banquet space.
Those were the ping-pong looking tables, right?
They were.
Yes.
And they even went so far as to make sure that our furniture storage room would accommodate those extra tables and chairs. And so we, we really tried to think of everything. I'm sure there's something we haven't thought of that when we open, we'll go, oh. But they, they've really taken a very thorough approach to all of this.
Well, that's excellent. All right, any questions or comments from council on this? Not all, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the furnishing and fixtures for the City Center one oh nine East Main.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, we got the furniture.
All right.
All right, that takes us down to item five, considered future agenda items. Other than an update on the sign, is that enough time to get some renderings done for the sign? Aaron? Is that enough, the next council?
I'm sorry?
For the next council meeting, could we possibly have an update on that?
Absolutely, sorry.
Excellent. Mr. Martinez will have that for us, awesome. Anything else? We got a city BG?
City BG MIT RCP Financial Policies, we need to make some changes, we're still working on that. And then some updates on our permit fees.
Excellent. Oh, and the one item we talked about beforehand, so.
Did we pre-?
Yeah, please.
So Mayor and Council, at the request of the property owner at one oh seven Dewest Drive and in, at the recommendation of staff, we will be putting back on the agenda some discussion items for one oh seven Dewest Drive and Dewest Drive as a whole related to both stormwater, wastewater, and streets. So we've had some additional discussions today that I need to update you all on. And that the property owners along Dewest Drive would like to override some additional creation as well.
Excellent. Anything else from council, anything you'd like to see on the agenda? All right, that's the end of that. We're going to item H, administrative reports. We're going to receive reports from staff, starting with the March reports. Or ending with the March reports too, just the March reports.
Sales tax looking better.
Yep.
It is down from prior years overall. Not too terribly significantly, but it is down. And, and that's, that's the same as what we're seeing across all communities in Texas, so. I can't read those numbers from back here.
Uh, one seventeen, two oh three.
So same.
And one twenty-two, eight eleven.
So we are seeing a slight decrease in the sales tax revenues, but again.
It's two and a half percent, I think, yeah.
Sewer revenue is always good.
And if you'll remember, we did do a slight increase on our sewer revenue, our sewer fees this year, so that's what you're seeing reflected there. But you do see on the water revenue side, we are performing a little bit ahead of where we were the same time last year. So that's why do you think that we will have some opportunity to utilize fund balance for some of those projects that we were discussing earlier in the meeting?
Yeah, using utility, excess utility funds for utility projects.
But you know, with, with the insulated pipes we have now and the emergency generator, we ought to be looking pretty comfortable and as safe as we can get it.
And we've definitely increased our resiliency.
We have.
For weather impacts.
We really have.
But again, so the other projects that we were looking at were more maintenance items and things that we need to ensure the continuity of service.
Oh, yeah.
It keeps flowing even when it's warm, that was those things. All right. Oh, we got a, we got a big spike in franchise fees in March, what happened?
Uh, what was that?
Did y'all shake down somebody?
Yes, for the new construction. And we received it this, this going around month. And so last year, if we received, it may have been more this year, like last year, we could have received it in a different month as well.
Is that going to be a recurring franchise fee or is that a one-time?
No, it's a one-time.
One-time deal.
With our new construction.
Oh, I see.
They did for the prior year and then they, they brought it to the market.
They're not wanting that back, are they? They're not wanting that back, are they?
Not yet.
Any more news on Bexis? Nothing.
No additional permits for Bexis.
Bexis? They were involved by somebody.
Really?
Yes. Uh, they were purchased by T-Mobile, change for customers will be effective June first, so might be why they slowed down.
Could be, yeah.
No, you're doing great. So garage sale permits, we still have the rule in place where garage sales happen permanent only, right?
Yes, sir. And if we receive a complaint about a garage sale that may be happening more often than permitted, we will, uh, check it out.
Got the door fixed at the Mills on Wheels operation.
Oh, was it broken?
Yeah, they had it, uh, secured by a rubber band.
Did it close automatically?
Yet, but we got it functioning.
I think a rubber band would do that. Excellent, um, we got our library numbers? Yes, excellent. Everyone's reporting, that's nice. Yep, let's grasp heading in the right direction, thanks for sharing that. Any questions from council on the monthly KPIs? Alright, you also had an income statement, uh, in your packet, any questions on that income statement? No? Alright, well, that takes us down to item I, executive session, which we have none, so we won't be doing item J, which is reconvening, takes us down to item K, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn for the evening.
In a second, any further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, stay here, the time is six fifty-two, and we are adjourned.
Madam Secretary.
I'll let you now.